Okay, I'll call the April meeting of the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order, and if you'll stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we'll have a roll call.
Davis?
Here.
Carey?
Here.
Ostermeier?
Here.
Hampi?
Here.
Borders?
Here.
Let the record show that all Commissioners are present with the exception of Ray Kimball and Mark Latham, who are excused.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight?
Do not.
Okay. I guess we need to introduce Vicki Jo Carey and welcome her to our commission.
Thank you.
She's here to serve a two-year term, so we appreciate having enough Commission members here to have a meeting.
Welcome, welcome.
Okay, a reminder, we have two public hearings on the agenda this evening. If you would like to speak or comment on either project, please fill out a comment sheet located on the podium in the back corner, and I'm turning it in to Kelly up here in the front, and we'll allow you time to be heard during those hearings. Okay, we have any conflicts this evening?
No.
Nope. Okay, good. Consent calendar.
Move to approve consent calendar as presented.
I second.
Motion and second. Roll call, Kelly.
Davis?
Aye.
Ostermeier?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Commissioner Carey?
Okay, now's the time on our agenda where we would take any comments from any citizens that have anything to address the council with, as long as they are not agenda items to be come forward later. Any comments come forward? I don't see any. All right. Unfinished business, there is none, so I guess we're at the public hearings. Okay, again, I'll remind you, if you want to speak during the public hearing, once we open that hearing, you need to have a sheet turned in to Kelly up front. All right, I'll open the public hearing then for Tullamore 1B final PUD amendment.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Manley, Associate Planner with the City of Post Falls, introducing to Tullamore Phase 1B final PUD amendment. The applicant is Copper Basin Construction with the representatives Steve White and Drew Dipman, which are both present this evening. The requested action is to review and approve a major PUD amendment to Phase 1B final PUD to include high-density residential along with a previously approved assisted living site, as well as a site that was previously approved for a commercial lot and assisted living within a portion of the Phase 1B final PUD development area. Project location is, as seen with the asterisk, just east of Charville Road and north of Poline Avenue. The proposed project, as seen on the right, is for approximately, to amend the assisted living facility, which you see here in both red and yellow, which I'll explain in a minute for the differentiation in color, for up to 130 units in place of the previously approved 118 units of assisted living for that site. The reason for the yellow balance is that is the area that's currently slated for assisted living. In red, that's the area that has currently been approved for a commercial lot or assisted living, so this would include, would amend it to add multifamily of both those locations. The project size is 5.69 acres. The comprehensive plan is designated as is commercial, as well as the Highway 41 corridor plan. Current land use is vacant, and the current zoning is CCS, but it has a PUD overlay on it. The water provider is the Ross Point Water District, with sewer being provided by the City of Post Falls. So at this time, this will include staff's introduction of the project.
Okay, thank you, John. We'll have the applicant come forward, and you'll have 15 minutes to present to the Commission.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Steve White with Copper Basin Construction. I live at 10895 North Point Hayden Drive, Hayden Lake, Idaho. Here tonight, looking to get your guys' approval on sort of opening up the uses of this particular piece of property. This is a platted and unapproved lot. All the infrastructure is in and done. It was part of the original Phase 1B Tullamore PUD. The restrictions that are placed upon this parcel from the original PUD for assisted living facility sort of really restrict the allowable uses on this property. So what we're really looking to do, it's a complex process because of the PUD and approvals, and it takes a lot of, you know, a lot of staff report and a lot of time, but at the end of the day, what we're really looking to do is open up the marketability of this particular piece of property in the Tullamore project to allow more uses than assisted living. It's been available for sale as an assisted living facility site since 2007 with no takers, so we really feel that as an apartment site, at least opening it up for multifamily uses, whether it be condo apartments, something, will increase the marketability of this project. There's really, we've nothing in the staff report that we would want to argue with or disagree with, and staff has asked us to restrict the use of that commercial, one-acre commercial lot with, I think, seven or eight uses that are on there, and we're in agreement with that. We worked that out with staff, so I really don't have a whole lot more to go over on this, so we're just looking to unrestrict this piece of property. It's in a commercial zone, allow a lot more uses in it, and be willing to, certainly happy to answer any questions, if anybody has any.
Questions?
No.
At this time, no.
Anything you want to add?
Okay. John, we'll have the staff report.
So the Planning Division, in review of this proposal, found it important to look at the overall preliminary PUD as it was approved, in conjunction with the final PUD as a phase of it, and does, and how does that proposal look in the big picture with the preliminary PUD, as well as look at the specifics of the final PUD proposed amendments as well. So what you see here is the overall, in red, the meets and bounds, the general meets and bounds of the preliminary PUD, Curry Avenue being to the north, Highway 41 to the east, and Poline Avenue to the south, with Cecil Road along the western boundary. The proposed uses range from some row houses, some single-family along the western part of the property, commercial along the eastern edge, with some office use on Highway 41, with multifamily being on the northern, southern extents as part of that preliminary PUD, with some, at this time, open space planned for centrally located, with the assisted living facility right here along Charville and Poline Avenue. The preliminary PUD that was approved in 2006 had a residential housing breakdown for the whole preliminary PUD for 383 single-family units on individual lots, 520 multifamily units, and the assisted living facility of 118 units. In red, you have the general boundary for the Phase 1B final PUD with the as-approved June 7th, I mean, June 2007 uses with commercial on Highway 41, with multifamily in the greenish-blue area, with some row houses and the assisted living facility in the lighter purple. The housing breakdown for Phase 1B at the original approval was 70 townhomes, 28 row houses, and 118 assisted living units. Since then, what you see in blue, in the highlighted area, just south of Early Dawn and east of Charville Road, is 151 multifamily units that's replaced the 70 townhomes, 50 of which being senior housing, which resulted in 29 percent of the 520 units as approved with the preliminary PUD. The yellow and red areas, as mentioned, with the additional 130 multifamily units, if approved, would result in 280 units, or 54 percent of the 520 multifamily units as part of the preliminary PUD. Now, at this time, 520 units still stands for the preliminary PUD as a measure, as a cutoff for multifamily units, so as future phases go on, that item would either need to be addressed or met. Also, staff wanted to look at the proposed 23 dwelling units, reason being is 18 units is the standard R3, standard for multifamily. So there's an increase in density per acre for this proposed area, but looking at the Phase 1B as a whole, what is the density for Phase 1B? So we looked at all the projects that's occurred and have been completed, from the cottages to the Two Commons projects, Tullamore Seniors, and the duplex project, that with this, that you would total 302 units, or 13.93 dwelling units per acre net, which would be less than the 18 units per acre for an R3 zone. But in communication with the applicant, there was a desire to mitigate some of the effects locally for the 23 dwelling units, and that was to provide some open space centrally located or located within the projects for a project that exceeded 18 dwelling units per acre. If a project was less than 18 dwelling units, then they weren't desiring and providing the open space, as the overall preliminary PUD has a 10 percent open space requirement within it. As Steve White mentioned, there were some restrictions that were placed on the red lot on this image, and reason being was these weren't perceived as maybe the most beneficial for a gateway into Tullamore going forward, and that would be the auto marine recreational vehicle sales lot, an auto marine recreational vehicle service center, a car rental agency, construction equipment rental, a mini storage facility, or a convenience store with gas. Engineering Division has reviewed this request and found that the proposal does not significantly impact the anticipated operations of the city's roadway network or water renovation Both the Post Falls Police Department and Cootney County Fire have reviewed this, and they have no issues with the proposed project. But before I close, I did want to bring light that there is a recommendation for an amendment with one of the conditions, and that was, currently, the condition states that open space provided in a PUD shall be held and maintained privately for the use of homeowners, of the owners of residents within the development, and is to include to, for the use of owners of the residents and the public. The applicant's been informed with that condition. A modification is okay with that.
Turn number three. Number one, under.
So at this time, I would complete my staff report and would stand for any questions you have on the project.
I just have a real quick question, just to clarify for me. I think you said there was 520 units planned in the whole project?
Yes.
So sometime in the future, they would have to come in and make an adjustment from the original approval for these extra units they're putting in? They'd have to change it somewhere else?
If they were going to increase it or modify a future area, yeah, then they'd have to propose an increase and explain the rationale, and if there's mitigating measures, apply that at that time, but at this time, 520 is the cap, so one could presume that if there's increased density, at this time, to meet for 520, there'd be probably less dense projects on the north end, if there wasn't an amendment.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for John?
I don't have any.
No. Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you.
All right, testimony. Anybody signed up to speak in favor?
Do not.
How about anybody neutral?
Do not.
How about anybody opposed?
We do not.
Okay. Guess that moves that quickly. Applicants, do you have any other comments you want to bring forward at this time?
Do you guys have any questions?
Questions? Okay, thank you. Staff, any questions for the staff before we close the hearing?
I guess I'll jump in with two semi-related or unrelated things. I apologize for being late, first of all, and I do work with Steve White on some projects, but I'm not involved in this project, so I just wanted to state that for the record. Other than that, no comments.
All right. I'll close that public hearing then, and we'll open it up for discussion amongst the Commissioners.
I don't really have any comments.
Mark?
I guess my only comment is, you know, it makes sense that it's a change from assisted living, because it's kind of, it's right on one of the arterials coming in and out of there, so from that greater density, it makes sense of the location, and then it's up against other commercial or multifamily, so it makes perfect sense to me. I guess the only comment I have was, is why wouldn't the PUD be allowed to be opened up for multifamily and assisted living? And I know that's probably not something they're interested in, but I don't see any problem with that personally. I think they're compatible with each other, so.
It would actually allow both, so it's not one or the other. It's just, yeah, the option, as long as they're within the density and the unit counts.
Okay. Because typically, in normal zoning, assisted living and multifamily are compatible within the same zoning. Okay. Perfect. That's it for me.
Red? Do you have anything? Anything? Okay. Hearing no comments, then I think we need a motion.
I'll motion. I motion to approve Tullamore 1B final PUD amendment as, as present, with, approve with the conditions included by city staff report.
Okay.
I probably should add that clarification as well on the open space condition.
Would you like me to?
No, I think that's fine.
Yeah, with the open space clarification, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
One second. All second, then. All right, we have this motion in a second. Kelly, let's have a roll call.
Davis?
Aye.
Ostermeier?
Aye.
Latham?
Aye.
Hampi?
Aye.
Carey?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Okay, that was quick. I'll open the public hearing now for the Solomon Zone change.
So the Solomon Zone Change, case file ZZ-14-01. The applicants are Mike and Kathy Solomon, which are both present. The requested action is to review and recommend approval to city council for the proposed zone change request from single-family R1 zoning to high-density multifamily residential R3 zoning. The general location is south of Celtae Way, along Corbin Road, about a third of a mile, just north of I-90. The surrounding zoning, you see here in yellow, is R1, and in red, you see along Celtae Way and down Ideline would be commercial, and the orange, a little bit north of the proposed zone change, is R3. The project size is 4.21 acres. The comprehensive plan designation is residential. The current land use is single-family residential, and the current zoning is R1, single-family residential. The water provider would be Eastern Green Acres Irrigation, with sewer being provided by the City of Post Falls. And at this time, that would include staff's introduction.
Okay. Can we have the applicant present, please?
Hello, my name is Mike Solomon, 324 North Corbin, Post Falls. This is my wife Kathy. So we'd like to just keep it simple. We would like to maximize the value of the property, but do so in a way that fits the development trend for the neighborhood. Commercial or light industrial is a good use along a highway, but our immediate neighbors do not seem to support that type of use. Single-family homes right on a busy interstate aren't ideal either, so why not use the site for multifamily housing? Low-rise apartments could serve as a natural buffer between freeway noise and the less intensive residential to the north. Although multifamily development of the site is probably not the immediate future, at some point, more housing options will be needed in Post Falls, if we are to expect to continue to grow. Attract and retain employers to the community, especially with a property being in such a proximity to River Bennett Point. So that's kind of our argument.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? What was your address again, sir?
324 North Corbin.
Okay, so you reside close to that property, exactly?
On the property.
Okay.
Yeah, it used to be a horse farm, then there had over 100 horses there, and then had a mobile home there, and we developed the property and made it a nice home and cleaned it up, so there's not six feet of grass, and it just.
It was a disaster.
It was, we fixed it up and kind of made it nicer.
But it has, I'm Kathy's wife, sorry, but it had, we are on, there's 700 foot of highway frontage right there, you know what I mean? So it's right on.
Right on the interstate.
It's right on the freeway, and there's a mountain behind us, and we could plant trees.
A hill.
The hill, I wouldn't say mountain, but anyways, I think, yeah. I just think that would be better later on. There's quite a bit of like the R3, and there's commercial right by the Flying J, and there's another gentleman that's connected with the houses, and he wants to go R3 too, so anyways.
Got you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, the staff report.
So the Planning Division recognized, and as you've seen within the zoning map, that Dawn's Place subdivision is adjacent to the east. There's large lots, single-family homes to the west and north. I-90 is adjacent to the south, and multifamily residential is often located near busy roadways, highways, and commercial uses. Also wanted to include a kind of overview of the existing land uses and conditions out there. Where you see the yellow outline, that's the single-family homes, and a lot of these unmarked areas are the large lot, single-family homes next to where you see the asterisk, the proposed zone change. The orange outlined areas are existing, what would be considered more of your higher-density areas, ranging from mobile home parks to apartments, in various forms and dispositions of housing. In red, you have the industrial and commercial development areas, with the Flying J being right about where the curches act currently. The proposed zone change is consistent with the comprehensive plan's future land use map, but at this time, they're not in close proximity to the ordinary activities for those who do not drive. What was staff considering as ordinary activities? It'd be a bank, milk, eggs, things that you would run out to go get out of an emergency or a quick need. And so, as you've seen within the staff report, Frontier Grocery is about 3/4 a mile away, with Flying J about a mile away. Now, when you look at the map, it's actually closer than that. There's Flying J, so it does look like it's right next to it, but currently, the infrastructure is not connected over to Corbin, which in order to get to the Flying J, you'd have to walk down Corbin, along Celtae Way, and then down Flying J there. Also, staff wanted to bring up that the current environment is deficient with sidewalk and existing pedestrian bike facilities. Currently, down Corbin, there's no facilities to support the pedestrian traffic up to Celtae Way. Now, once you get to Celtae Way, we do have sidewalks along there and down to Flying J, or over to Frontier Grocery, but you would have to cross Celtae Way in order to get to Frontier Grocery at a nearby intersection. Engineering Division has commented that the proposed zone change is not anticipated to have any significant impacts on the city sewer or transportation systems. Post Falls Police Department commented with an exhibit PA-2 within your staff report that due to Corbin Road being the only access way to the site, that they have concerns about no sidewalks and bike lanes for pedestrian traffic, specifically children and adults accessing schools and stores. They also noted that currently, regarding freeway noise, there's no natural or man-made barriers to reduce those noise impacts. Cootney County Fire, they have concerns regarding the available water for fire suppression. They also have concerns regarding the road width currently out there being 18 feet and potentially 150 vehicles located at that multifamily apartment project. 150 came from, if you take 18 units per acre times 4.21, it resolves to about 75 vehicles. If everybody had two, you'd get 150. And they would recommend that the road be minimally 24 feet to connect the site for providing service to that site. So at this time, I'd stand for any questions for staff.
I do have one. Now, could we, could we add conditions to this, kind of like we did with the last one?
Well, actually, our current code doesn't allow conditioned zoning, so with conditional zoning, you could then approve a zone change with conditions, similar to a PUD, but with this specifically, what you'd be either approving is the R3 and the permitted rights of the R3, or you wouldn't recommend approval, so it'd be, it's either one or the other. You can't go down the path of adding conditions with zone change approval. Similarly, like with a PUD, you know, you could address buffers, open space, or other connecting issues.
Did staff have any, any issues with the vehicles? I was just wondering about the access. It seems to me pretty limited access. Just one way to get into that property, and the potential for substantial number of units in there.
As far as site plan review, you know, we'd be dealing with the, all the onsite parking there. Once you get through there, I mean, and I don't know if, Rob, if you want to come up and comment on that more specifically, as far as Corbin Road.
Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. Regarding Corbin Road, and if you were to put in an apartment complex at that location, and if it was built to its maximum potential, the 75 units, that would actually produce, based upon our calculations, approximately 750 vehicle trips per day going on Corbin Road. The thing to keep in mind, though Corbin Road right now is, at its narrower parts, about 18 feet wide, a road width of 24 to 28 feet wide is able to carry in excess of 1,000 vehicles per day. When you hit the 1,000 vehicles per day, that's usually where we switch between a residential street and then start going to what's called a collector roadway to handle the larger volumes. At the intersection of Celtae Way and Corbin, even with, say, 750 trips coming from this project, and the other neighboring parcels developing, we don't anticipate at this time that Celtae Way and Corbin would require traffic signalization. Now, that could change, say, if that area started to develop and there became a safety issue. Our 2004 transportation master plan did take into consideration not only the current land uses, but some of the future projected uses in that area. That wasn't identified as a location for a traffic signal, but that could change in the future. We also have West Vella Place, which connects from Ideline and will eventually someday connect into Corbin Road. So as the area develops, there may be some other connection points, but also, the road as it develops should also gain the infrastructure so it can handle that volume. With the 18-foot width, I also want to point out that right now, sanitary sewer does not extend down to that parcel. In order to put the sanitary sewer in, they have approximately 1,000 feet of sanitary sewer to construct, and in doing that, that would probably obliterate most of the existing roadway. roadway and require complete rebuilding. When they're doing that, we would require them to rebuild the road, not with curb and gutter and sidewalk, but they would need to rebuild the road to our minimum standards and have enough width on there to meet the fire district's requirements. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead. So if you had to rebuild the road, and you're going from 18 to 24 to 28 feet, all the way from Corbin to Celtae South, is that correct?
There are portions of that road today that exceed the 24 feet, where there's been curb and gutter extended.
Okay.
In those areas where there isn't sanitary sewer, that's the locations where the road necks down to around 18 feet. Sometimes it's a little bit more, and those are the sections that would definitely be widened out to the, meet the 24.
So that property right now is, is owned by private citizens, is that correct? Or is that part of the city? So is it city property that would be expanded to 24?
The road right-of-way?
Yes.
Is wider than the 18 feet.
Okay.
You have, I don't recall what the road right-of-way is out there. I know it's in excess of 40 feet, but most typical roadways, like in a residential street, will have a 32-foot wide road, will have a 65-foot right-of-way going along with it. And there is enough width to widen the road as it exists out there today, with two to three extra feet on each side, and still be within the right-of-way and not imposing upon private citizens' properties or having to buy rights-of-way.
That answers my question. Thank you. Okay, Rob, so what about the pedestrian traffic?
We do not have any requirements within our codes to require them to put in pedestrian facilities. Pedestrian facilities are generally constructed as development occurs. We have a lot of locations around the city where there are not pedestrian facilities, or where there are missing elements. From my professional opinion, yes, pedestrian facilities would be good. If development occurred from where the, where the most improvements exist today and slowly worked their way south, by the time you had, you developed this land, you would have more infrastructure in place, but we can't require that.
They would provide, though, the site, when it was developed, if it were approved, just on the frontage of the property, there would be sidewalks.
Yes, and that's a very minor portion compared to the third of a mile up to Celtae Way.
That's what I was concerned with, is the whole students and.
Distance.
Walking up and down that roadway. Any other questions for staff? Do we have anybody to speak in favor of?
We do not.
How about opposed?
We do not.
Neutral?
We do not.
There was a letter, you know?
There's letters. Okay, yeah, but that's part of the staff report, so. Okay, do the applicants have anything further to state?
Probably the only things fair patient on.
Oh, can you, can we have you come up to the podium, please?
Just a clarification, the sidewalks are coming, they come down within about 400 feet of the property, the developed road, so there's already developed where the, where the housing development is on that little road. There are sidewalks on that, on that, so it's only about 400 feet that the road needs to be developed, so maybe 300 feet, I'm not sure, but just a little bit. And whoever buys it to develop it, or whatever, they would, you know, have, obviously have to do all that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions for staff before we close the public hearing? This way? Any other questions for staff?
No, sorry.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing then, and we'll open it up for discussion amongst the council. Start down here with Vicki.
I just, I just have concerns with the traffic, and that was my only concern.
You know, obviously, in the staff report, there were some, some issues. My biggest concern, obviously, is the same concern that the police have when you talk about children's school access, the sidewalks, noise reduction, and then the biggest piece is probably that, and the available access to water, fire concern. So those two reports concern me.
Okay. Down to Nancy.
The same thing concerns me, the connectivity, sidewalks, the biking paths, that's my, that's my biggest concern.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, we're only approving or denying a zone change, so we have to, we have to just think of it in terms of an R3, you know, high-density R3, which means that it could, it could be single-family or duplexes, or apartments, or triplexes, or fourplexes, or whatever. So that's the difficult part, because we can't make recommendations on buffers and things like that, but the location makes sense. It, I am in the consensus, it's the continuity, and at some point, that's probably going to change, especially if there is more multifamily down to the end of the road, but the time between now and then, who knows that continuity? And then I guess from a, you know, from a fire suppression standpoint, it's true, you'd have to have sprinklers, and that's up to the engineers to determine at that point if that facility can handle, you know, 70 units or whatever. They'll, they'll know at that point, but that's a big question, too, so. But we can't be the judge on that.
Red? Concerns about safety issues. Okay. Well, I think the water providers, East Green Acres Irrigation, so I'm pretty certain that they would have the capacity to serve it. I don't know how far their service, it probably goes all the way to the freeway now, so they probably already have irrigation actually out there, so. So I think, you know, that's one of our highest-producing water systems in the area, so I don't think that that part bothers me as much as the safety and the development of Corbin Road itself, but. Okay, what's your pleasure?
Well, is my understanding that the road would be widened, but pedestrian access would have to just still be on the road, right? But it would be a wider road.
Right, at the time the sewer was extended, the road would be widened.
Yeah.
As part of that.
And that doesn't have to include any other improvements, just widening, widening the road.
In fact, it wouldn't be the other facilities, pedestrian facilities.
We do have a lot of areas here that don't, that kids have to walk on the roads, and it's kind of, you know, it's, they live at the end, that just happens to be where they live, and they have all that that hasn't been developed yet or improved yet, so it's kind, I think it's kind of hard to make it, a problem for them because we haven't developed there. I mean, it's, safety is an issue, but, you know, kids walk in, and like I said, in the roads that aren't developed, that don't have sidewalks within Post Falls all over.
If it's not a collector street, the speed limit would be posted at 25, is that correct? If it's a neighborhood street?
Does anyone know if those kids are bused, or if they walk?
They'd be bused from there. I would assume they would be bused, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion? Somebody?
I think I'm, I think I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the zone change for case file ZZ-14-01, Solomon Zone Change, as presented.
I second.
You need to state the zone?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, from a single-family residential R1 to high-density multifamily residential R3.
I second.
Okay, roll call.
Davis?
Nay.
Latham?
Aye.
Ostermeyer?
Nay.
Hampi?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Porter?
Nay.
So we have a tie vote. So we need to discuss further.
I think we can carry it over with a tie to the city council.
Yeah, we'll do that, so.
We can't carry it over to city council to make the ultimate decision if it's a tie, correct?
So if you're comfortable with that, we can carry it over with split vote.
All right. That's what we'll do. No new business, staff comments?
No.
Okay. Commission comments. Again, welcome, Vicki.
Thank you.
Yes. Abby on board. We have one item left on the agenda. Motion.
So moved.
We're out of here. Thank you very much.